Turn the lights off. Matt is going to start us off in just a moment. And before we do start, I want to thank you for your flexibility in having us seated here instead of being really. It's not ideal, but I think we're making it do. Can everybody hear us okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, welcome to the coziest town hall to date. More to come, I'm sure, a couple months worth. How's everybody feeling? Everybody comfortable?
Yeah.
Can everybody see okay? This is nothing we can do anything about that. Oh, we got more coming in, so we'll... All right, well. We probably only have about 12 more chairs, so come on in. Yeah, this is the best seat in the house. Right here, right in the action. All right, anybody else in the hallway?
Y'all will. The whole parade.
How about this?
It takes longer to get here.
You gonna scope me out for it? Does Gail Ward give you here?
Yes.
Your window's down in your car.
You looking for Gail Ward?
Yeah.
Your window was there. The damage is done, right? All right, let's get started. Thank you, Perry. Yeah, just, Dale, just one more. It's raining, all right, if you, if that changes your... All right, let's, uh, we're gonna get, we're gonna get rolling here. If Carson and Perry can close the doors for us. If Perry can close the doors for us. If Jordan can close the doors for us. I'll close it myself. You want something, go try it. Okay. Now we're really ready to start. A few hiccups for our first relocation. Let's start with a moment of silence. It will be brief, so I apologize in advance, but let's go ahead and get started with a moment of silence. All right, thank you. We're trying to keep it all level, so you can remain centered if you're not already. We do have an important announcement to start with, real quick. Uh, we only do these town halls on the first Wednesday of the month. Mark your calendars for May. We're pushing it back a week. Uh, we're doing it on the second Wednesday, so that's the eighth. May 8th will be the May Town Hall. Everything's good for April, but May 8th, we do have to move it back here. And the reason for that is exciting. Uh, the Greensboro Chamber has selected us again to host the Leadership Greensboro graduation. And it's a great opportunity for us to network with local business leaders. Uh, we tried to work out a better day with them. We're not able to do so, and ultimately ended up with the first Wednesday. So again, mark your calendars. Town Hall in May will be on the 8th. Got a good agenda for y'all. We won't belabor this, but Carson's got a quick announcement for development, community updates, campus life, wellness, spiritual wellness this month. Facilities, dining, executive director, and a QA from you all. And so what we'll do is turn it over to Carson for a quick announcement and then jump into the less exciting things. All right, hi everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Back, everything's...
Okay, wonderful, well. Uh, a little bit of a smaller crowd today, uh, but I just wanted to take a very brief moment to let you know, uh, of an exciting announcement. So Charlie, Ruth, who is here with us today. Uh, Charlie and Mary, uh, were working on giving a gift to Friends Homes, uh, last year. Unfortunately, Mary passed in, uh, in October, as many of you know. And so, uh, Charlie has continued with those intentions, and they gave a significant gift to Friends Homes to establish a scholarship for employees here at Friends Homes, so that our employees, both at West and Guilford, can, uh, apply, uh, to further their education. So, yeah, yeah, we're very grateful. Thank you, Charlie. We are very excited. We think it's gonna be a wonderful program, and we think it will be a great incentive for our employees as well. We, uh, plan to have, uh, take applications this coming spring. We will have a, and, and are you all hearing me okay? I am hearing a little bit of feedback. Okay, is that, oh, there we go. Okay, great. So, uh, we will be taking applications from staff this spring, and we will be, we will be working with staff and residents to distribute these scholarships. We'll establish a committee to distribute these scholarships this coming May or June, around that time. And so we're very excited about that, and thank you again, Charlie, for your generosity. Uh, just wanted to let you all know about that. We will have more information to come.
All right. Wonder how Carson had that burst of volume there, but I'm gonna look for that myself. Okay, rumor mill. We did this last month. I'm excited to do it again. Plus we get to have some nice, uh, quotes about rumors here. So in the absence of facts, we will tell ourselves stories. And we've had a little bit of that going on. Nobody in this room, I'm sure. Uh, rumor mill, so, uh, y'all probably haven't heard this, but the rumor is West will not have a weekend receptionist. The truth is, that is not true. Uh, we actually just hired a weekend receptionist over there. There was some thoughts that y'all may have stolen the weekend receptionist spot, but that is not the case. Uh, her name is Karen Barton, so if you're over there on the weekend, you'll get an opportunity to meet her. She comes to us with, uh, a management background. She worked at Truist Bank where she was a manager for a while. Another rumor is that Friends Homes is changing their pet policy to allow pets in the non-expansion homes. So if you recall our pet policy, uh, any of the new homes that were built during the phase one of construction, those are pet friendly. Everywhere else is not. Uh, it is important to note, however, we've had an increased presence on campus of service animals. And, uh, we are required to, to comply with some regulations from the ADA as it pertains to service animals. We have a policy that addresses all pets, both, uh, pets for fun and pets for service. And, uh, that is, that is in effect and has been in effect, so we don't want to put that to rest. Uh, if you know, if you or a guest of yours has a service animal, um, or you live in a home that allows pets and you want to have one, uh, just for reference, the resident services coordinator is the one who kind of is the gatekeeper for that. So you go through a process of marketing, and then the resident services coordinator can help you answer questions and feel anything that comes up about that. And there's yours right there. Cable service, this is not part of the rumor piece, but it probably could be. Uh, First Spectrum, in error, sent a letter to all of the West residents that their, uh, cable service is gonna be terminated on March 25th. Uh, that came out so kindly at 2:00 in the afternoon on a Friday. Uh, but they sent that in error. Um, so if you have friends at West and you hear this, you can, you can help be a messenger of hope that that is not true. Uh, they did receive a letter from us that day clearing things up, the residents, and this. And, uh, have been told to disregard that letter, but if someone has just forgotten that message, you can help put a mind at ease. So with cable services, this does give us a good opportunity to talk about our approach to how we're going about, uh, the single digits spectrum negotiation process. So two things, uh, we are working with single digits, first, first prong in this attack here. We're working with single digits to improve the services that they are offering to the extension homes. So that would really only impact the Ridgecrest Town Homes on the Guilford campus, but that does include the Villas and the cottages and townhomes at West. We're working with single digits. We've done a lot of new things. Mark couldn't give you more of the dirty details here, but really we've installed some new equipment, switches, boxes, just infrastructure needs that have slowly made some good progress on that service. So what we want to do is, while we're, while we're in disagreement with single digits, we want to improve that service. For everybody else who lives in a, in a non-expansion home, uh, we are in constant negotiations with Spectrum. So I had someone the other day ask me, they said, "I can attend Town Hall. Do you have an update on cable?" And I said, "Well," and before I could answer, she said, "You're working on it." And I said, "Yes, we are working on it." Uh, however, we shared with a group of residents, uh, some more details of that, and we got some good feedback that, you know, we want to hear what's going on. So I, real quickly, just so everybody's up to date here. Uh, we have conversations with Spectrum and single digits pretty much on a weekly basis. And so we're kicking back and forth, different things, different aspects of this contract. But where we're at, our goal in negotiations with Spectrum is to retain the current services. So anywhere that currently has Spectrum, we keep it. We want to try to include the expansion homes where infrastructure will allow. And you'll hear that that last little bit of that phrase is important, because in the townhomes and in the cottages, infrastructure is not as big of, as big of a commitment as it is in the Villas. In the Villas, we're getting into some infrastructure challenges, and just to be very transparent, it, it becomes very, uh, very difficult to get that service in there. So we're working through that. Uh, and then our in-house channel that some of you are familiar with, and has been gone for quite a while, Spectrum will not replace that until we come to some sort of agreement, so that's in here as well. So if you take anything away from this, just know that we had a good meeting with Spectrum. We have come to what we feel is a good verbal agreement with Spectrum around some of these things, and we're waiting to get it in writing. And so we continue to, to touch base with them. We're just waiting to get our agreement in writing. And then we can come forward, stand up here, and give you great news, and you all clap. And whoever is to deliver that news will be the hero forever. And so Jordan and I will fight over who gets to do that. And, uh, and that's it. So if you have questions about the internet, or, excuse me, about cable, we can answer those, but, um, there is a little, there's, there's just a lot of uncertainty here from residents, and we just hope that we can communicate some information, and we can feel better about that, about where we're at. So the community updates. The resident handbook is done. Uh, there was a task force of residents identified to review that. Uh, we've sent that, uh, the, the handbook to those residents. They reviewed it, and, uh, they were given a week. Uh, they knocked it out in about two days, so we've got that in hand. We're gonna make some edits. Next steps, we'll share some, uh, more details around how we plan to distribute that and how you can access that handbook. And then if anybody visits over at West, uh, we've had a good meeting. We've got a task force focus group together to work on, um, renovations to the resident lounge. We've met with the designer twice now, and, uh, we're getting close to having a, a final design to put forward. So if you visit the West campus and hang out in the lounge after you go to Kohl's, there'll be, uh, there'll be some construction going on over there soon. Change hands, Guilford College. So you'll have to come here. So, uh, raise your hand if you got really excited about going to the library when we first announced. Okay, two people, three, okay. All right. We're getting used to the dimensions here. I was excited too, and then, uh, we ran into some roadblocks. We thought we'd work those out, and then we ran into more roadblocks and, uh, thought we'd work those out. We ran into more roadblocks. So Whitney and I went over and had a visit with the Guilford College crew on Monday, and, uh, I think we've worked through it. We've got a good plan going forward. I'm hesitant to share anything. They want us to come onsite and see the library and really talk through those logistics. We committed to doing that. Uh, they have a brochure that they put together for us and for this partnership, so they are committed to moving forward. It's just, we want y'all to be able to go experience the library. We don't, if you want to look at books online, you can look at books online. So we're, we're working through that. Uh, we do have a good plan moving forward. We'll communicate that out later, uh, once we get it all finalized. Whitney and I are going back over there to, uh, meet with Suzanne, who's the librarian over there, kind of in charge of the library, and we'll work through that. But here, I mean, thank you for your patience. I led with the library because, uh, that's not good news, or it's not bad news, it's just not exciting. But we do have exciting news about auditing classes. So show up hands, who's interested in auditing classes at Guilford College? Okay, so good, we got a thinker. So if you remember, we started this process, and I met with Maria, and we talked, and it was, you can go ahead and audit classes, but it's gonna be $450 per class, which is a lot of, I mean, you're, you're rolling in college at that point. Uh, so we met with them Monday, and, uh, Whitney can attest to this. I got really distracted after they gave us this update, because they had given us a discounted rate on that. Now that'll be $50 to audit a class. So that is $50 for a four-hour class, of course. Um, that is a special discounted rate to Friends Homes residents only. And the $50, just so you know, the, the why behind this, uh, that covers badges, uh, just the things you need. That's really, they're giving this to us at cost, and we're very grateful for that. So we're very excited about that.
Is there automatic use of the library if you have to?
No, so the question was, is there automatic use of the library? The library kind of operates on its own, and, uh, we're finding that out. I'm finding that out. Some of you laughing, a couple of you emailed me that you have had experience there. I'm learning. Uh, additionally, they shared with us Monday that they're gonna begin next year hosting more of the Brian Series speakers on campus. So if you want to buy tickets and go, it's not as far to travel. We will be arranging some, some buses when that time comes. Uh, they'll be hosting the day auditorium instead of the Tanger Center, which will be nice. We will continue our partnerships, and we'll have access to that streaming that you're used to now. Uh, but if you want to see it in person, it'll be a lot easier to get there. We will start, uh, to include a Guilford College events section in our connection. They let us know they have a newsletter of events going on on their campus. They're going to sort of edit that for Friends Homes resident appropriate programs, and we'll start to include that in the connection. So if you see something at Guilford College you want to attend, you'll be able to hop across the street. You'll be well informed there. Uh, and then there's still opportunity as it pertains to supporting and/or hosting exchange students, particularly around, uh, when the campus closes for breaks, so fall break, summer, spring, winter break. And, uh, they just, there's a big need there. Not quite sure what that program looks like, but we, I think there's, there's good opportunity there to support the college, to give back to the community, and to engage in some, uh, some intergenerational programs. So if you're interested in hearing more about that, not committing to anything, but just, you know, want to find out how you can support these students, uh, come see me, come see Whitney, and, uh, we'll, we'll find a way. We're gonna start working through this program, and hopefully get some more structure to it, uh, soon. And I'm gonna turn it over to Whitney now for a campus life update and a wellness update, since Jasmine is up for it now.
All right, good afternoon. My name is Whitney Ariza, and I'm happy to be here to share some information with you today. The first is some of the upcoming events we have. On March 12th, we're gonna have a guest, um, performing the spirit of Harriet Tubman. Her name is Diane Faison? Fason, and she's gonna be over at West doing this program on March 12th, about 11 o'clock. Um, Cheryl knows of her. She has an award-winning, um, play, a one-woman play that she does, and I think you'll find it really, um, interesting. We'll provide transportation for that as well. On March 23rd, we're gonna offer an Easter egg hunt to our staff members and their families. So we're hoping our staff will come out and bring their little ones, uh, children or grandchildren to come and do an Easter egg hunt. If any of you are interested in helping us stuff some eggs with candy, we've got about 500 of them. That we're, we're gonna stuff and, and hide between the two campuses down by the bridge is where we'll do that for our residents, or for our staff members. Um, April 13th, that's our big day for the 3K, 5K. So I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, I can't run or walk a 3K, 5K," and that's okay. You can still participate. Um, Kayla in the back, you can jump in anytime. She is, um, helping us coordinate this. She's doing some pop-up walks to prepare people for this, uh, race. And then also, if you want to sign up, the, all of the proceeds go to the Resident Assistance Fund, uh, everything that we raise. So it, it doesn't mean that you have to do the 3K, 5K. You could sign up and get the t-shirt, and then just walk as long as you want to. Or you can be a cheerleader in your shirt as, as folks go by cheering them on. But we're trying to get as much participation as we can, because we know it goes to a really good cause. So we're working hard on getting the word out about that. It's open to the community as well. So if you have any friends or family that you would like to invite, we would love to have them here for that. Do you have a rain date? We do not have a rain date. It'll be rain or shine. As long as it's not lightning, we'll be out there. We'll wait for the lightning to pass if it is. Rain or shine, and I think they had a little rain last year, and they ended up, a lot of residents did it inside around the West campus, so we're gonna make it work. And then April 24th, I hope you'll work your calendars for our second annual prom. The theme is a night under the stars, and it's gonna be a dessert bar. So you'll have dinner like you normally would, and then you'll come to the hub. We're gonna have some music. We're gonna have some entertainment. It'll be beautifully decorated. And you can dress up or not. We'd love for you to dress up, of course, but you don't have to. Um, it'll just be a good time for all of us to get together, and we'll have our new resident social at that time too. So we'll have some new residents there that we'll be introducing to you. Okay, I'm gonna do the wellness update for Jasmine today. So let me give you a deeper overview of the 3K, 5K. This is really exciting. So for 2023, we had $5,400 in sponsorships. And then when you added in everybody that did the race, paid the registration fees, we ended up with raising $9,600. Well, for this year, we already have $9,450 in sponsorships. And I think that number might have just gone by a little bit a few minutes ago. And we need your signups, or your encouragement of others that you know to sign up, because we'd love to get more and more, um, each year and increase, increase our number each year. But you can see, we're almost there from last year, so we're ready to knock that out of the water and raise more for this year. Um, there's some pop-up, pop-up walks that are scheduled. Kayla has been meeting. They have been at West and Guilford. Um, different days a week and different times. It's listed in your connection newsletter. And those sometimes are only a 15-minute walk. Sometimes they're a 30- or 45-minute walk. It depends on who comes and how far they want to go. So Kayla and Jasmine have been reading those. We'll hope you'll join us for some of those. Some other exciting things happening in wellness. We're starting a Zupa Gold class that's gonna be on Fridays at 2:00 PM over on the West campus. This Friday, it's gonna be me, Jasmine, and Kayla rotating and teaching each a couple of songs. And then each of us will teach one Friday in the month of March. You do not have to be an advanced dancer. You, you don't even have to have ever danced. It's just a, a, a fun exercise time together, and it's based on Latin dance. So we might do a little salsa, a little merengue, and we'll show you how to do it. So no experience required, just an open mind and ready to come and have a good time. The Tai Chi for Arthritis and Fall Prevention Series has been extended. It's been very popular, so we're gonna continue offering that. Kayla is gonna lead a sugar lecture on March 7th. She is gonna be demonstrating how much sugar is in the drinks that we have, um, or that you may, may drink. It's kind of eye-opening to see how much sugar is in sweet tea or, or a little small Coca-Cola. So you'll get a real-life depiction of the sugar for that. March Madness brackets are available, so you can find out more information in the connection about that, but those are available to fill out and turn back in. We're doing a pot of gold challenge for fitness, so anytime you use the fitness center, there's some coins there that you can place in the pot, and we're competing against West to see who can fill up our pots. If you've ever been interested in learning about pickleball, we're doing a tutorial on March 12th. You can come and learn about the rules, learn how to play, um, learn how to keep score. If you have any interest in pickleball, this would be a great opportunity to learn more about the game. And then towards the end of March, we're gonna have River Landing come over, and we're gonna do a friendly match and, um, pair up our, our players with River Landing players and just have a good time playing some pickleball. And the hope is that we'll be able to go over there, and it just opens up, uh, the variety of players that we can play with. And we'd love for you to come watch that day as well. There'll be some seats for spectators if you don't want to play pickleball. But if you do want to compete, you can talk to Kayla. Okay. Up next is Cheryl Bridges. She's gonna speak on our spiritual wellness program.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see you all here. Um, for spiritual wellness, the month of March. Something new. I had someone, I don't know if she's here today, comment to me about when is Vespers going to bring back this, uh, speaker, and she named him. And I said, "Well, he won't be here at Guilford, but next month, he's going to be at West." And so it's like, I started investigating it, and you could get to West. You could go have dinner at Kobel's if you wanted to and go to Vespers, but you couldn't get back, 'cause shuttle stops midway through. And so I talked to James McNeil, and we worked it out that beginning this Sunday, there will be a shuttle running until after Vespers. So if your favorite speaker is going to be at West, then go over there knowing that you won't have to walk back in the dark. And, um, I'll skip to Easter Vespers is gonna be here only. So West can come over here for Easter Vespers. And Bill Carroll has arranged to have, whom I hear is a preacher's preacher, Charles Penley, a retired Methodist minister, will be doing the Easter Vespers for us, which we really appreciate him coming here. And if you want to see Bill's sidekick, his brother, he, I think he has a broken arm from Bill twisting it behind his back. He will be bringing Palm Sunday Vespers here, um, at Guilford. So Bill, what's your brother's first name? David Carroll. So we have a, a good lineup for Vespers here. Um, skipping backwards though, we are continuing the discussion of Quaker values through the USFW. And if you wonder, what is that? It's a, it's an old gathering of women, Quaker women internationally, that has for many decades had a presence here at Friends Homes. And, um, they are being revitalized, and we are on the eye of the Quaker spices. So you haven't missed S and P, and we'll be talking about integrity. And it's surprising, because we, at this gathering, we have a wide, uh, audience of Quakers and non-Quakers. There's, uh, if you know Udi Natkin from West, who is a Talman scholar, comes over. And so we have this wonderful discussion of how do you interpret each of those values personally? And integrity will be a good discussion as well. Um, Good Friday services, there will be a Good Friday service at West at 11:00 Good Friday morning, and then one here in the Solarium at 2:00. Um, so you can go to either one of those, because those are in the shuttle hours. And then, um, our Aunt Sue Mitchell's son will be bringing us, is it the 7th or 8th Annual Easter Sunrise Service?
We can't decide. I, I'll go for 8.
We've lost count. We've lost count. So 8, we'll, we'll give you 8. And it's in the courtyard, and if it is raining, hopefully not, it'll, it will be here. So we've got you covered for the, that what, um, the mainstream Christian world calls Holy Week. Any questions or comments? The last thing is, for me, is that, um, I would love, if you are a pianist and you enjoy playing piano for others, you feel comfortable doing it. I say, "I'm really good at the piano when nobody's around." Uh, and then when one person's in the room, I'm getting too nervous to play. But if you have, are a pianist, I would be grateful to have you join the volunteers that we have. I feel like we're running them a little ragged. And, um, it, that might mean one Vespers a month. It might mean maybe a memorial or, um, one Good Friday service or something like that. It's, we're not gonna ask you to do a concerto or anything. But if you think you would like to sign up for an occasional, um, piano assisting, that would be awesome. Let me know. Thank you. I see a lot of people poking other people, so let me know if you're interested.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. So I'm gonna give you an update about what we've been doing the past month.
And it's been a lot of work orders. We've done about, well, over 700 this past month. Last time we came to speak to you, it was closer to 1,000. I think one thing that-
Do introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. My name's Mark Ford. I am the Director of Maintenance.
Thank you.
So I work with the team that helps try to keep everything running and ship shape around here. And as part of that, it's tracking work orders and keeping up with the data and making sure that the team is doing what they should and where they should and how fast they should. And this is just a brief example of what we've been getting done. Much to the chagrin of West Campus, we did a lot more work orders here than Guilford this past month. And quite frankly, we have more technicians here at Guilford dedicated to your campus. Some notable projects at West, and I'll go through these relatively quickly. We put in some heat lamps over at Kobel's, and we've heard there's some concerns about temperatures of food, and Carly will speak to that more here in a little bit. The Hub flooring replacement. So over at the Hub, we've got some problems with flooring. I don't know if anybody's been over there in the Hub. You see some of those floor areas are bubbling. There's a manufacturer defect in that flooring. So we've got the manufacturer on board and the vendors on board to replace that flooring. I'm sorry, is there a question?
No, just sorry, so sorry to hear that in our nice new home.
Yeah, it's a bit of a shame, right? But the manufacturer's owning up to the problem, and they produce a product that's not needing the proper specifications. So they're doing right by us and they're fixing it. And we're not having to pay a penny for it, which is fantastic. So we're gonna get that fixed, and we're gonna try to do it in a way that doesn't impact everybody. And we'll communicate that schedule once we get it all ironed out. But we do have that commitment from the manufacturer and the subcontractor to put it in. The elevator replacement project is still a ways out in terms of the full-blown elevator replacement project. For those who don't know, we're replacing all of the elevators at West. And we'll be doing it one by one, and it'll be pretty impactful. But we've started some of the preliminary work. And the electrician needs to get down into the elevator pit and do some wiring and set up for those new elevators that are coming. Unfortunately, you may come to West and see one of those elevators is closed temporarily for an hour or so, because they don't like to duck while they're trying to do the wiring that elevators are coming up and down. So we turn it off for a little bit while it's happening. All the signs are up when we do it. Parking lot lights. So it's a concern over here as well. Over there, there's more parking lot lights that are out, and we own those. Here, the parking lot lights that are out, they're Duke Power lights. And I've been working with Duke. I've resubmitted new work order tickets, and they've actually acknowledged these. And they contested a few that I put in, but the others, they said they'll be fixed within the next 45 days. And that was about five days ago. So let's start the 40-day countdown. And I'm gonna stay on them with that as well. Over at West in 5100 hallway, we've got some leaks in the ceilings. The domestic water lines have some leaks. Our team's gonna do a shutdown and get that fixed. And again, it's only gonna affect the folks in the 5,000 hall. And in the Villa mailboxes, we've got a project over there, or over the apartments, they've got a package delivery problem, because the drivers can't always get in, the packages don't get in the right places. So we're putting in these fancy lockers. I don't know if you all have heard of the Amazon lockers or that sort of thing. That's big electronic locker box, where the folks will put the packages in the box. Residents will get a code, and they can come get their packages at that mail station that's over there. So that's something that's coming soon. And then storm doors. This is for both campuses. I've ordered the storm doors. The manufacturer said it's a six-week wait time on the doors. That order was placed about a week ago. So again, we can start that kind of six-week countdown to see how accurate they are. And we should have the storm doors in hand, and we'll start scheduling to make sure the folks want the storm doors at your residences. Here at Guilford, the most notable things is this big roofing project. And I've got a lot of pictures, so we'll talk about that extensively. We already talked about the storm doors, and the other thing that kind of affects everybody is this beautiful floor. What do you guys think? I'm kind of leading the audience here, like, "Oh, the beautiful." I'm a big fan. I think it brightens the space. I think it works great. I hope you all do, too. So the big project. So thank you for those of you who have not been peeking in the roof. For those that have, I'm watching. We've got cameras. But I promise that I'll continue to take photos and kind of bring you into the space, so you don't have to enter the dangerous area. This, as many of you may recognize, this is the fireplace. So we boarded it up to protect it, but all the ceilings are gone. And this was the second or third day of construction. So this is right after they tore out all the ceilings. This photo was taken a while ago. This next photo is standing with the fireplace at my back. There's the doors where you come in. Again, you can see everything wide open. And this next photo, I climbed up in the ceiling to get you a better look at everything and try to help describe exactly what we're doing in there. So these white planks are made out of a cementitious material. It's really gypsum, but you can imagine it's concrete, lightweight concrete. And it spans from big steel beam to big steel beam. And they're probably about 10 or 12 feet long each. And they all go through and connect, and that's what the shingles sits on. And it may be a little hard to see on this small screen, but up here, you can see it's all cracked and falling apart. So that's why we're doing this project. So we're taking all those out and we're replacing them. This is a photo that's probably very familiar to you all. This is what I like to call our Taste of New York City. It's just like walking down the streets of New York. You've got the nice scaffold ambiants around it. We're trying to do the best we can with, we added some lights, trying to make it nice and bright. But again, that is there for your protection, because all that work in the other photos is happening above you. So just in case anything were to happen, we want to make sure everybody's protected as they walk back and forth. So it's very important to stay inside the scaffold. Don't try to walk around it. There's not a lot of space, but stay inside the scaffold. For those of you who haven't been outside, that's the big crane when it's all stretched out there in the courtyard. And it's all day on Tuesday. It was lifting a big bucket from here up to the roof. They loaded up the stuff and bring it back down and load this dumpster. And this photo is up on the roof. So I climbed up there to show you really what are we doing up there. So these are those panels that I was talking about that were taken off. This is the new metal decking that we're replacing it with. So that is a single solid steel sheet, and it's probably about 20 feet long, weighs a few hundred pounds. It's about three feet wide, and it comes in sections. It's all corrugated. And we put that down and screw it into those steel I-beams that I showed from below. And it's replacing all of these concrete panels. And there's another photo of us taking those panels off. There's hundreds of them, and they're all being taken off by hand, all being hand-loaded into a bucket and sent down to the dumpster. So it's a long, arduous, labor-intensive process. A little bit risky, too. To pick this up, you gotta stand in the hole. So it's not for the faint of heart. It's for trained steelworkers. They're used to working at those heights, and they're doing a great job. And I'm very happy to say that it was going great until it rained. The process was working well. We opened up this whole section. And in that whole section, we completed in one day, which is wonderful. And as we keep getting good weather, we'll be able to keep doing those big sections one at a time.
Is that gonna affect the sound underneath if it's a steel roof?
The question is, is it gonna affect the sound underneath because of the steel roof? It will not affect the sound, because we're gonna install the same acoustical tile ceiling and insulation like we had in the past. So unless you happen to be having a conversation in the attic, it won't affect the sound.
Well, you remember how tin roofs used to be.
Oh, yeah. This won't echo like a tin roof, and you won't hear the rain. And what I don't show and have a picture of is when we finish that roof, we're putting two layers of plywood on it and shingles, so it'll deaden any rain. We won't get that nice soothing. I personally like a tin roof in the rain. But you won't be able to hear that, unfortunately. This is a shot from when we took out some of those panels. I had said at our last meetings, or some of the meetings, you'd be able to stand in here and see the clouds. We can. I don't recommend it, because some of those panels, the small ones, pieces are falling as they're taking those out. So again, stay out of the space. That goes for staff as well. But it's exactly what we're doing. We're pulling those panels out and replacing the steel and putting it all back in the same day. But I could go on and on about construction. That's my favorite thing to talk about. If you want to talk about it more, I'll be here. So feel free to grab me.
All right. Good afternoon. So I wanted to start dining off with our favorite topic, green beans. So I wanted to share with you all that, starting this week, we are offering two different types of green beans at the same time at both campuses. So you'll see a southern-style braised green bean on the menu, and then if you like your green beans a bit crunchier, we'll still have an al dente option as well. As Jordan said in the last meeting, this was not a hill that we wanted to die on, so we are gonna offer both types. So you should see that on the menus this week. And please give us your feedback. So if you are ordering the different types, please let us know if you like it. If you don't like it, come and tell me. We really are looking for feedback for the changes that we're making. I did want to update you all on plate warmer and the warming shelf that we've ordered to hopefully address the temperature of not only the plates, but the food. So right now, we are waiting for them to be shipped. So I'm checking my email every day, waiting for them to tell me it's on the way. And when we get them in, we will let you all know. I don't know how well you can see it, but this bottom right is the plate warmer that we actually ordered. For those of you that dine at Kobel's, you may have noticed this week that we have heat lamps. So those are in, and Mark was so nice to install them over the weekend. So if you're dining with us, we want your feedback on that as well. If you're feeling like you noticed a difference in the temperature of the plates and hopefully the temperature of the food, we want to hear it. But we also want to hear if you don't feel like you noticed a difference. You know, we're trying really hard to address the concerns that you all have, and we want to know if the interventions that we're trying are working, or if they're not, and if you need to look at something else. I did just want to mention Easter is this one. We are doing Easter lunch signups like we do for most holidays, but I did just want to share. Potentially, we're going to look at doing signups via CarHedge instead of paper. We're finalizing that this week. If we do that, we will make sure that everybody, even the people who do not use CarHedge, know that signups are out. And you'll be able to sign up with Sabrina or myself if you don't use CarHedge. You'll just let us know. I just wanted to remind everybody, so these are not mandatory reservations with a time slot. We ask for a time, but we're not gonna turn anyone away. It does just help us know how many guests are coming, what our staffing needs to look like, and just helps us anticipate kind of what we need to do to give you all a really good service. Once that is out, the deadline for signups will be March 22. But again, if you miss it, let us know. We're not gonna let anybody walk away with no good. All right. So happier not. Have you all seen the happier nots that are here? You know what I'm talking about? Okay. If you don't, there's a beautiful picture of the one in the Dogwood Deli. So what I want to share with you all about the happier nots is continually, we're really asking for you all's feedback. This is not to replace the paper comment cards. I know that some people are more comfortable with that, but it's to supplement. There is now one at every dining menu. So if you haven't seen the one in the little corner of the deli, it's to the left of the ordering window. And the one in the roof is in the middle of that hallway, which is barely visible. What I do want to share is that each kiosk is venue-specific. So if you go to the one in the deli and put in a comment about the Hub, it's going to show up on the report that I get under the Hub. Deli, sorry. Thank you. Keep me straight and calm. So it is venue-specific. So we are asking that you put in comments about the venue in the venue that you're at. We do review the information that we get with the comment cards for dining committees. So if you're interested, I can show you. But we actually get these reports emailed to us, and they show different trends. They kind of compile all the data that we get through this. And so it'll show us what we do well, paying points or things we can do better, and then the open feedback that you all get. But we're able to compare month over month, week over week. It's a really neat tool, and we're not having to manually input that ourselves. Those reports are being compiled, and we get to take that and really look at the trends. And so given that each unit is specific to the venue, what I want to try and do to make everyone's lives a little bit easier is I'm going to make a one-page sheet with links to each kiosk. So you'll be able to open a link on your computer or your tablet, or your phone, if that's your thing. And there's QR codes as well, so you'll have all four venues on one page. And that way, if you're in your apartment or you want to give feedback about the deli, but you forgot to do it while you were down there, you can click that link or use that QR code, and it will take you to a mobile version of that kiosk. So it's just another way for you all to hopefully feel like you can utilize that and give us the feedback that we are asking for, so that we can continue to push the program forward.
Thanks, Carter. So as we've done the last few months, I want to share where we stand from a census perspective. Between the two locations, we are 96.2% reserved and occupied in our independent living, 88.9% in assisted living, and 89.9% occupied in Skid Nurse. And these are great numbers. And this definitely contributes to the financial success of our community. Now, it wouldn't be success in any of these areas if we didn't have the help of residents as well, and if we didn't have a wonderful lifestyle here, happy residents that are very engaged. And as people move in, they get wrapped into the fabric of the community. So I want to thank you all for your help with that. But as the operator here, I'm very pleased when I look at these percentages, which are pretty highly occupied, which is always a sign of a good, healthy community. Financially, we're also performing well. Year-to-date, we're ahead of budget by almost $165,000, ahead of budget in revenue. And our expenses are under budget by $455,000. Now, you might say, "Jordan, that's a big number. Why are you so below budget in your expenses? Are you not spending money?" I can assure you, we're spending money. But we actually, there's a few positions, actually, there's a handful of positions that have gone unfilled. And some of that is strategic. We're waiting to fill those positions for various reasons, but they're budgeted. The salary is budgeted for those positions, and so we're realizing some savings as a result of that. In one of our biggest cost centers that we experience is labor. Well, we provide benefits to our labor, our workforce. And in the expense category, our health insurance is performing really well. We just haven't had a lot of big charges to our healthcare benefits from our employees. And so we've realized a lot of savings as a result. Now, lacking change. You know, you have a few big medical events amongst our staff, and boom, we're right back up there again. You just never know. But so far, year-to-date, we just haven't used a lot of our medical insurance, and so we're realizing a lot of savings. So what that means is, as a community, year-to-date, our net operating income is $620,000, which is wonderful. And what you always want to do at the beginning of the year, the few, you know, the beginning months of the years, you kind of want to stock up as much cash as you can, because you just don't know what's gonna happen as the year goes on. Again, like I mentioned with the healthcare benefits, you know, we could have a major infrastructure issue. Some type of charge may arise. You just don't know what might happen. You know, in the COVID days, when COVID was first happening and the workforce was pretty affected, there was even mid-year salary adjustments. Well, that all costs money. You know, so you just don't know what's gonna happen throughout the year. And so this is very healthy for us in the first few months of the year to have a bit of a stockpile, a positive net operating income variance. So we should all be very pleased when we see this, because as the year goes on, you know, things will change. People will be hired. Medical benefits will be used, and there's been unforeseen as well. I'm gonna ask questions to be held to the end, and you will be sure to answer your question. Recruiting update. Very pleased to announce that we have identified and offered a position to an Associate Executive Director for Guilford. You all know, this has been a long journey, and we've really tried to take our time with this position. Trying to make the best decision for the community. I also wanted to include a number of residents in the process. And so I believe it was about seven or eight folks from this community that participated in a meeting with the candidate. These are members of the Board, the Resident Association, and chairs of some of your committees that participated, so they were involved. This person will begin his journey with Friends Homes on April 14, if everything goes as planned. This person will begin his journey with Friends Homes on April fourteenth, if everything goes as planned. Next month, I'll share more information on the candidate. We'll have a picture for you. We'll share his name, but it's still a little fresh. He's still working out notice at his current company, and so for, for his protection and confidentiality, we're gonna wait. When we're much closer to his arrival, I'll share more details. But I want you to know that we have been working very hard on this position, and we're very excited for what's to come. Now, that will allow Matt to focus solely on the West Campus. This gentleman will focus solely on this campus. And so you'll have a little bit more accessibility, visibility, you know, and you'll know where the AED is. The office is right by that reception desk. And we've identified and offered a position to an Executive Assistant. This is a position that we've needed for quite some time. This position will support me and both AEDs, as well as the Director of Health Services. So, pretty big job for this person. And another major component of what they will be responsible for is supporting the board. And everything that has to happen with the Board of Trustees, there's a lot that goes into that. Communication, scheduling, taking minutes at the meetings, and these meetings occur all throughout the year. Now, some folks might be wondering, well, what about Angela? What happens to Angela? Angela is our Business Office Manager. And so she has a different title. She has her own set of responsibilities. We're actually very pleased for Angela, because we're able to take some things off of her plate. She has been a trooper. She has done, every time we've asked Angela to do something, the answer's always been yes. Yes, yes, yes. Well, guess what? Angela is up to her eyeballs in tasks.
Yes.
And we need to provide some relief to Angela. And that's partly why this position was created, because it got to a point where we realized, it's too much, and it's not fair to her. So we're very excited for the Executive Assistant. Similar situation, I'll, I'll share her information closer to when she arrives. She's still working. She has to give notice, and, you know, so for, you know, out of respect to her, we're gonna refrain from sharing her name. But she comes from the industry, has been doing this position for quite some time. This gentleman also comes from the industry. He's been serving an Executive Director role for many, many years. He's been on the Board of Directors for a very well-known life plan community, nationwide, well-known life plan community. Lots of experience, and I think just what we need for this community. So, more to come. And one of my favorite portions, we introduced this last month. This is something I've done over the years in my past, and it's a lot of fun. Request response. There's a lot that happens here where the residents request something, and we respond. And so I'm gonna share some of those requests, and I'm gonna share how we responded. The first one, we already talked about. Can you cook the green beans better? The response, we are happy to announce southern-style green beans as a side option. So, now, will these green beans be just how your mother cooked them? What do you think?
I hope not.
Oh, I hope not! I hope that they're better than moms. Will they be just how you made them? Possibly not, possibly not. But are they a little bit closer to what you're asking for? I certainly hope so. There's a million ways that we can make green beans. But like Carly mentioned, you know, we were thinking about this, like, do we really wanna die on the hill of green beans? And the answer is no. Well, I don't know. We're gonna find out. You know, I believe, I suspect it has to do with some butter. Some fat back, some fat back, or bacon, or all those good southern ingredients that we all know about. You just illustrated perfectly our problem. You have a definition of what that should be. The person next to you might have a different definition of what that should be. Okay? And we are cooking for, what, seven hundred people? And everybody has an opinion, right? And there's many who are not shy to share it. So, look, what this is, is it's an attempt. This is trying. This is us listening. This is us responding, okay? We might miss the mark. We might miss it. But I'm gonna ask that you share your feedback with the Food Service Committee. You share your feedback with Carly or with me. We'll take your feedback, okay?
But Carly just said we would have two kinds of beans. We already have mush beans. So she said we would also have some not-so-cooked.
Yes, what, what are you, what is the message there?
She said that, you said only one.
No, I didn't.
We are happy to announce southern-style green beans, which we already have. I eat them all the time.
Yes, we're providing another, another type, okay? So you can choose what type you'd like.
Right, for two kinds.
That's right, two kinds. I didn't say one. I didn't say two. I said we're introducing another, another type, okay? We can look at the semantics of the words that were chosen, but what I'm saying is, we're offering another option. Let's see, can you replace the computer in the Friends Homes West Resident Lounge? There was a computer that was probably about from nineteen eighty-five. It's pretty bad. It's pretty bad. And the resident just said, hey, you know, I've been working on it, trying my best to keep it going. Is there anything we can do? Within the week, Chris, one of our IT employees, replaced it, and it seems to be working well. So we're thankful to Chris for doing that. We don't use the computer. The residents use it. So it's just a little, little response there. Can the food be delivered hot? Would everybody agree that that's a primary goal of the dining program right now? We need to focus on that? I can agree with that. We all can agree with that. So we, we've been looking at how we serve the food, and we realized that we could benefit from two different things. Number one, we could benefit from having an employee that their job is to deliver the food quickly. So it doesn't sit, lose temperature, and then get delivered. So we have identified some runners. That's what we call them. Their job is just to deliver that food quickly, to get to you quick. And also, we've identified some new equipment. Carly mentioned a plate warmer. So what it is, is it's a, it's a big metal box that's kept very, very hot, and the stack of plates, the plates are actually stored in that box at a certain temperature. We've probably had them at different times. For whatever reason, we don't have one now. A new one's been ordered, and it's on the way. One of the challenges with that is your plate will be hot. You're gonna get a hot plate, and so we're gonna have to work on that, too. But it should keep your food hot from below, kind of radiating up. We hope it helps, okay? Now, a lot of the food that we prepare here at Guilford is batch-cooked, because a lot of the kitchen is down below, the first floor. And so we also are looking at doing smaller sheet pans, so we can replace it quicker, so we don't have as much food sitting in the, in the holding area. So smaller portions, smaller, you know, that, that, we can keep food hotter and not continue to cook it. If it's kept too hot for too long, guess what? It continues to cook. So we're, we're working on it. We're trying different things. That's what I want you to know. We're trying, trying, trying. Can you use a font and a background that's easier to read? So on this presentation, we did a white background with black letters. And now, this is not normal circumstances. This room that we're in, we're gonna be here for a couple of months. Normally, you'll be able to see it a lot better. This is about the best we can do under the circumstances that we have. So I apologize for the inconvenience, but we hope that at least having the white background with the black letters helps a little bit more. I think it definitely will when we're back in the living room. And let's see, final request. Can residents' names be printed on the back of their name tags? You ever experienced that, where your name tag is flipped around and it's just blank, and you don't know the person's name? Well, that was asked last month at West, the residents asked, and we said, you know, we don't know, but we'll find out. Well, we have learned that yes, you can have your name printed on the back of your tag. Now, you can't do it for the employees, because we have some, some training information on the back of here that we use in case of emergencies. So for employees, we won't be able to do that, because we don't wanna eliminate that for us. But for the residents, you can. And if you wanna have your name printed on the back, you just have to go to security and make the request, and we'll take care of you. Okay? So that's just another, a little solution for getting to know folks. Okay. And that wraps up our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
My memory has turned loose of the financial beginning month for Friends Homes. That's the beginning month of your financial year.
When does the fiscal year begin?
Yeah, yeah, the six hundred and twenty thousand dollars as of, accumulated as of when?
October.
Okay, October. I remember that. Can I ask another question?
Of course. You've reached your one-question quota.
In a, when you have paid for or a table of six, you often have orders from the action station and the special at the same time. And there seems to be a difficulty in getting those two things coordinated together. Either your thirty-minute delay of getting your food, or your food is not the temperature that you'd like it, because it's cooked at different, because action station's upstairs, downstairs. How does that get coordinated? What's the...
Yeah, I, I think I understand the question. Yeah, so some stuff's ready soon, some stuff takes a little bit. Does it arrive at different times, too?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, right? And that's not ideal. Ideally, your meal would come at one time to everybody at your table, as long as everybody's all there and ordered the meal at the same time as well. You know, that's, that's part of the key, too. But, yeah, Carly's been a comment on that.
Sorry, I'm kinda hiding in the back. I, I hear what you're saying. I think, hopefully, hopefully having a designated food runner will help a little bit with that, and we are working. We use, we utilize our expo person, so the person that's putting that all together to coordinate that from a timing standpoint. So that's good feedback for whomever is expoing to just to coordinate it. They do try, and the goal is to coordinate that at the same time. So hopefully, that's something that we can take from this and get addressed.
Yeah, and I'm curious, has that happened recently?
Yeah, in the last thirty days.
Last thirty days? Okay, okay. That's good feedback that we can share with our new executive sous chef, too, to be on the alert. I'm glad you brought it up. I really appreciate that. Any other questions? Yes?
You announced that we're gonna get a Director of Healthcare, all other things, too. What will that person be doing in healthcare?
I don't recall announcing a Director of Healthcare.
New employee you're gonna get.
The executive, the executive assistant will support me, the Associate Executive Directors, and our Director of Healthcare Services. That's not a new position, Director of Healthcare Services. That's, that's basically the Nurse Home Administrator. That's Hannah Davis. She hasn't, I don't know if she's actually presented at any of the town halls.
She, she...
One time, right?
Yeah, very first, yeah. Very first round, I'd rather.
But she'll be up back here at a town hall to present again in the future, so we get to see who that is. You probably recognize her if you saw her. But she's in charge of both skilled nursing and both assisted living facilities. Her name's Hannah. Hannah Davis. Who would she think?
Yes.
Single digits. I'm a bit of a weird duck. I don't watch that much TV. But, hey, we're coming into college basketball season. That's when TV gets my attention.
March Madness.
Yes, March Madness. So folks have often asked me, well, how's your TV working, this and that, you know, just a discussion in the community, whether things are okay in my place versus their place or whatever. I really, the times I've been using it, I didn't really have that many downtimes. Now, recently, I'm getting a lot of downtimes where you're supposed to unplug it and replug it. Unfortunately, the way I have my furniture layout, it's a project to get there. So if single digits isn't gonna get their act together, would you please give me a little switch, that I can just switch it on and off?
The breaker, the breaker puts the furniture? Yeah. Charlie, what's your apartment number?
Nine eleven B.
Nine eleven B. Okay, thank you.
Mark's taking notes. We're trying to get you in shape for basketball season.
Your, your, your situation is not unique to the Ridgecrest Homes in particular. We, I think you heard Matt say that we've reached an agreement in principle with a provider, and we're really at the point of, we're waiting for the contract to actually arrive. And if that happens, which we do believe will, you know, we will have to do some infrastructure work, but we believe that the issue will essentially be resolved at Ridgecrest.
Just a side note, to show what's going on down there. I was going home one afternoon, and some, the two technicians were down at the neighbor's place, just, you know, nuts. They couldn't figure out what they needed to do. Got in a conversation with me, well, what's, you know, your place? I said, well, I mean, look, I went down. Everything was fine. I told them. They wanted to go down, and they actually took some photos of the screen or whatever, like, oh my gosh, this is working. But sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, you're illustrating where a lot of folks on Ridgecrest, and not, not just Ridgecrest, but the villas, the cottages over at West, you know, they're, they're experiencing similar issues, so, yes. Unfortunately, it's a convoluted process that requires a number of hands in the pot, some infrastructure changes. We're talking about wiring, adding some wiring, and put some holes in the walls, and do a number of things. I wanna assure you one thing. It's not a cost thing for us. We wanna make sure that you're satisfied with the solution, and we're willing to pay what it takes to do that. Truly, we've got a couple different companies in the mix. They're not great at customer service, and we've kind of been struggling with them through that. Fortunately, you know, as I say, we have a spectrum, which is our, our hope. They do provide a good cable service. You know, so once it's, once it's in there, I think we're gonna be okay. So, more to come.
I wanna thank Friends Homes for allowing the precinct, the voting precinct, to be here, so that we can all vote. We had at least three hundred and fifty people vote yesterday in this small space. So your patience was appreciated, and the staff's help in getting set up, and they fed us some. So, thank you.
Thank you to all the volunteers that dedicated their time and efforts on it. Sounds like it was a pretty good collaborative effort.
I'm just wondering if sometime we could have fish different from cod. And catfish. You know, the ocean's full of fish.
I think it would be nice to have a variety, like, what, good flounder?
The ocean, the ocean's full of fish, but the pond over west is only full of cod and catfish. What is your thought on the heart-healthy fish? What is your thought on the heart-healthy fish?
It's happened last night.
Anybody?
Dry and hard.
Dry. Overcooked. Because we thought it was trout. It says trout, and it told us trout, not one trout.
The heart-healthy fish? I'm referring to the heart-healthy fish. I'm referring to the heart-healthy fish, very simply.
It's not that color, but it's nice.
Okay. I wanna be very specific with the feedback that I ask right now. What is your opinion of the heart-healthy fish?
What? Oh. Unedible.
Okay. Did you get that? No, okay. Sorry. I just want, I, I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. We would use that. The, the request was for a little more variety in the fish that we're offering, and it is noted. That actually, that comment came up to me recently, about two months ago, and that's how we ended up with flounder. I'm gonna make it.
Right.
And it was good. People liked it, right?
Really, right?
Yeah, okay. So that, so that's positive feedback that we like the flounder. Okay, good, good.
I was just gonna say, the seasoning on the fish, including what, is often very blah. And you, and you often have to request lemon, which to me is part of the cooking process.
The seasoning on, you're talking about the heart-healthy fish?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, the seasoning on the heart healthy fish is often, her words, blah. And we often have to ask for a lemon. Thank you. Understood. Okay. I think we have a good understanding of the heart healthy fish at this point. Any update on the merger? Is there an update on the merger? It is moving along positively. I actually attended a meeting. It was neat for me. I was able to attend a meeting and it was a combination of the leadership from the two organizations. For those of you who may not know what Mr. Bull is talking about is Friends Homes, excuse me, Brightspire and Wellspring are in negotiations to merge, which is a very positive thing. I think that we're going to get a lot, a lot out of that if, if that all comes together and happens as we believe. So just moving forward, roles have been defined between the executive leadership. I don't have much else to, to share at this point. They are getting to a point where if, they're going to put pen to paper, and if something was to change, it would cost money to back out. So that tells you that they're, they're pretty close. So things appear to be moving forward positively. And I can tell you, the meeting that I attended, where there was other executive directors, vice president of HR, you know, that, those types of folks there, CEO, president, CFO, it was very collaborative. It was just a very positive spirit and so I'm very encouraged by that. What other questions do you have?
Not a question, but speaking of the food, the new Alex, I like the new Alex very much. He's, he really goes the extra mile to make it right for you.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. Pass it on.
I write it in the comments all the time.
Keep it up, sir.
I don't, I don't sign it anymore. You got to pay all tour again.
There she goes again. Any other suggestions, comments, questions? Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm still happy though. And the people are work, people are working on it. I've talked to Carly. I've talked to Chris. I've talked to Raphael. And they're all working on it. But Full Count is giving them no specific answers as of yet as to why I do not receive a declining balance on my guest allowance. It doesn't appear that I've spent so much money to date, nor does it appear that I have so much money left to spend today. And I don't care which one it is, just so I have to know, just so I know what it is. But they're getting the runaround every time they make inquiries.
Carly reached out to Full Count?
No, I know. I want to say they have been. They've responded.
I appreciate it.
But Full Count is not being responsive. Am I not being on the duty?
We got the right people working on it. The right people. You just rattled off all the right people who are in the loop.
Absolutely.
We're going to keep plugging away. Well, I appreciate your patience and appreciate you working with us on that. You're patient. Yes, you are. We know you are. Okay. Well, folks, I think that's a wrap. Thanks for coming. Thanks for your feedback. Thanks for your flexibility with the space.